Do I mean to pledge allegiance for men, women, and persons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Lord Jesus, thank you. I want to thank you for the newness of life that is found only in you. As the board works through a number of items tonight, business items, I'm just kind of asking that we have a vision about what it's all really about, that it's much more than a budget and bonds and teacher contracts, but it's about young boys and girls and young men and women. And I ask that we know that it's much more than just plugging information into their minds, but that it's about their heart and their spiritual well-being as well. I just ask that administrators, us as a board, teachers and staff, do our jobs well to accomplish this end. And give praise. All right, a number of things tonight, but we're going to hope to move quickly. Future board meetings will be October the 10th and then not until November the 14th. Well, November the 28th at regular time. Revisions on the agenda are very simple. I think we have one more item added to new business and then a couple additions to the chart. Recognition, I don't think we have any donations to approve, unfortunately. We're always gracious for those or grateful for those. Mr. Keith, any other school recognition?
Yes, so we'll go ahead and start with, I believe, and I had it. We will start with Metro North, Mrs. Moore, if you want to. Are you still looking for yours?
No, I've got it.
Okay.
And so we had, I believe it was last week, maybe the week before, our annual licensing visit from the state for our Little Mars preschool. And that's just to ensure that we're following all the safety regulations. And of course, our physical staffs, so we got to buy and cover. So we're just really thankful for that. And it's a lot of work on the backside to make sure that we have, you know, everyone trained in first aid and CPR and all of those credentialing pieces. But that allows us to qualify for some additional funding from the state for families that qualify to pursue CCDF funding for the childcare vouchers. It also lets us then move on to the next step, which is try to have a quality rating, which allows us to accept to be an eye with the kids. It's our next step for that. And we also have the absolute honor to have 11 Northfield students come Tuesdays and Thursdays that are interested in pursuing education as their career. And most of them are juniors and seniors. Mrs. Dyson teaches that early, it's an early childhood in human services class, but we just love having them in the building. It's a benefit for them and it's a great benefit for our students and our staff, so.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Moore. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Sharp Creek, we want to celebrate our parent professional staff who is very hardworking and puts forth lots of effort on a daily basis. I'll read those names, Caleb Black, Hannah Sloan, Carrie Pugh, Jen Pollard, Sarah Aderman, Kathy Lyons, and Jessica Florick. I just want to say thank you to them for being such a positive part of what we do on a regular basis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. And I have a few other ones. First of all, from Mr. Snyder in Norfield, Norfield Junior Senior High wants to congratulate Jayden Baird, Shelby Macy, and Anna Kissel, who all received the National Rural and Small Town Award from the College Board Award Program. So the criteria for eligible students include a GPA of 3.5 or higher, the PSAT NMSQT or PSAT 10 assessment scores that are within the top 10% of assessment takers in the state, and also earn a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams in ninth and 10th grade, and also 10 in a rural area or small town. So if you think about that, a lot of criteria, a lot of very tough criteria to be able to accomplish it. So we do want to recognize them. And also, this is something from a past, past Norfield graduate. Past, that doesn't make any sense. I was like, a Norfield graduate, Emma Nguyen. And I might have, I'll read this and I'll see if Mrs. Moore wants to share anymore because she's the one that first saw this. That Norfield graduate Emma Nguyen was recognized in the Ball State University Alumni Magazine for her dedication and act of kindness after an architecture comrades collapsed in class never regained consciousness. Emma and two other students honored the student by completing his final semester project. Ethan Whitehead's parents were invited to the presentation and the project was well-received on its merits. And it's just really, really great to see some things that happen for those students that have graduated from our school, and particularly Emma Nguyen from Norfield. Mrs. Moore, you want to say anymore about that?
I just think that that speaks highly of Emma's character. You know, my daughter's been involved in that architecture program. It's a top program. We don't have any extra time. And she was present when that, you know, sprouting student, she spends a ton of time, like practically lives within the studio. When he became ill and later passed away, and for her and her colleagues or her classmates to take on his project and finish it, it's just huge speaks for their friends. I was, you know, in tears as I'm flipping through my alumni magazine looking to see what are they saying about teachers and architects? And just totally lost my breath when I saw that about Emma. It was.
Appreciate you sharing that. Ball State, I think what they do is they send out the magazine alumni by grade point average, and they go from highest to lowest. And Mrs. Moore got hers like several days before they went online. And so I probably got mine. And so I do appreciate actually seeing the hard copy of that too because it was online. So appreciate her sharing that with us. And then I have one thing from Mrs. Lewis at Southwood. She said, "Southwood High School would like to congratulate junior music department member Mackenzie Mormon for making it 2024 Indiana All-State Honor Choir. There were over 40 students from our region that auditioned this year, and she was chosen to be one of the top soprano performers. She'll perform at the Emmettson Theater in Fort Wayne on Saturday, January 13th." So again, we have lots of students that do a lot of great things. I'd just like to recognize them for their accomplishments and also the adults in our programs and in our schools.
Good, thank you. Public comment on agenda items at this time? If not, we will do one if we sent agenda items. First being approval minutes from prior meeting on the 12th.
Seven. Second.
All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Claims, if you had an opportunity to review, questions for Chris? I noticed we had payment in there on the roof. Is that completed or?
It's not fully complete, it's close.
Close.
So that wasn't final payment, please don't have final payment.
Not red motion for approval, we have a second.
To move. Second.
All in favor of approving claims, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and move right on to payroll.
Nothing out of order here.
Over to payroll. Second.
All in favor of approving payroll, say aye.
Aye.
All right, nobody opposed. Financial summary, Chris, you want to summarize the summary?
Uh, yeah. This is just cash flow, showing end of August for your education operations fund balances. Just showing that a lot of the costs, estimated expenses and revenue are factored in there. I even started doing a little bit with the teacher contract. I'd still like to see one more month of averages on September before I kind of lay out a little longer term one. But, you know, looking to try to finish the end of the year and our education fund off around 11 million, it looks like possibly, give or take. A lot of that has to do with monies that were received from transfer tuition. We did send out all of our transfer tuition statements a couple of weeks ago. So that's a long process. And then we'll start receiving some payments from that next three, four months or so. And then those payments get slower and slower. And then we have to have some additional support with the remaining of those payments, which actually, Mr. Keith Aderman, I have already had a few of those for last year even that we haven't received payments. I think last year we had four outstanding still that have not paid. And I think now we'll reduce down to like two. So still a pretty good return at this point in time. But, you know, a lot of that, when that money comes in, could play a role in what monies we actually have for the end of the year at that point in time. But.
And because of our situation, I just want to chime in a little bit too. Dr. King does a great job of explaining to new super tenants, new chief financial officers, because a lot of times they don't understand all the situation. But obviously, we follow the Indiana Code along with what, how can we build? And so sometimes it's just confusing for those people in those different schools to really understand all that. But he works hard to make sure they understand that. I actually have different meetings with different people. And so because of our situation with having so many of those transferred, and I don't know how many he mailed out this year, but a lot. And so it makes a different situation for our staff here in business office. Makes quite a bit more work, but it's something that we need to do because it's something that we have to do. So to get those funds back from what we spend for our staff at once.
Well, I know as a board, we appreciate that effort because when I first came on, that was one area that was not being chased. You know, we were way behind, weren't we?
Yes.
That's appreciated.
That's all I really had for financial.
It's not easy. All right, item three on my list here is the 2024 Project Hearing, the second preliminary determination hearing. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. The first one was held on September the 12th, last meeting. So at this time, we'll open it up as a hearing and we'll move through the process of this. The first one, I think, would be, Chris, you want to start?
Sure, I can explain the purpose of the hearing. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-26-7-37, before a school corporation may spend more than a million dollars to build, repair, or alter a school building that will be financed by a lease or bond, it must hold a public hearing at which explanations of the potential value of the project to the school corporation and community are given. Similarly, pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-20-3.5, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminary determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. These resolutions presented at this meeting establish the maximum financial terms for the proposed project.
So do you speak to the process of determining and communicating process for the community? Or that's understood?
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit the last board meeting.
Yeah, I could just mention too that, you know, we obviously have had several work sessions that dealt with this. And we do know that we have, the reason for this is to continue on with a strategic plan, but also not just with the strategic plan, but also just to be able to run classrooms for these students and the things, the things that need to be done to have appropriate classroom space for our students. And so again, this is part of our strategic plan number four, which has a lot to do with technology, has a lot to do with just efficiencies of our schools. And that is the reason for this recommendation.
Dana, do you want to address anything or Dave, as far as determining need or?
If you would like for me to, I'd be happy to. Otherwise, I don't know that we legally need to. We've presented it before, so.
All right. And we want to hear from people.
Look at that smile. He got it right, but I'm still not going to address your town name.
All right, welcome, Jim.
Thank you. We did go over in very much, in great detail in the last hearing, all the different steps. I can share as much or as little, basically, I want, we can go through the slide presentation, but we're looking at a bond issuer of 39 million. Yes, my cheat sheet's gone. 39 million.
It's not up here either.
But 39 million dollar bond issued, that when we look at your total tax rate for the school district, including each of your taxing funds, the operations fund and your debt service fund, there's room in that debt from our estimated 2024 tax rate, which includes the issue we just sold, setting up for next year's payment. The, this 39 million will fit within that total tax rate. So we anticipate no increase over the estimated 2024 tax rate, which includes everything that you established or issued to date. So that's kind of the basis for this. Your resolution, I shared a few tables that will be, of all the different numbers that will be included in the resolutions you'll consider tonight. But I think that hits the highlights that we do have cost of issuance that's involved, that that's out of the 39 million, leaving you money for construction, hard and soft costs, and that we can fund that within the existing debt service rate, or a total school rate. Any questions?
And just so you guys are aware, this will also be advertised in the newspaper tomorrow with the information Jim has shared with us over the last couple of board meetings.
All right, thank you. I think the next thing would be to open it up for public discussion. Anyone would like to speak now would be the opportunity to do that. If not, we'll move on to addressing the three bonding resolutions. Chris, would you want to discuss the first one that we need to address?
Yeah, so the first one is Exhibit A, called Project Resolution. So the project resolution is required when the school is planning to spend more than a million dollars on a given facility. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the cost of issuance, and establishes the total project cost, of which Mr. Elizander just spoke of. It also contains the estimated tax impact in that resolution.
All right. So we had that in the board packet, so we had an opportunity to review the Exhibit A. I have a motion at second, and then we'll open for discussion if we need.
So move to Exhibit A. Second.
Is there discussion before the vote? If not, those who would like to approve, say. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. All right, and move on to Exhibit B.
Exhibit B is the Preliminary Determination Resolution. And this is required when a school is planning to finance more than a certain threshold for a given facility. It contains the total project cost, maximum annual payment and lease term, and other financial terms such as the estimated principal amount and tax impact.
Motion for that, and then if we have a second, we'll discuss.
So moved.
Sorry, Jim. Any questions of discussion on that or thoughts? If not, I'll entertain a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, classes. Third item would be Exhibit C, anything to address there?
Yes, so Exhibit C is better known as the reimbursement resolution. So this resolution is relating to the financing of the construction project. This allows the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which it might spend on the project prior to the closing of the bonds. It is required by federal tax law in order to reserve the school corporation's ability to reimburse itself.
All right, makes sense. Do we have a motion and second on this item?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. I think at that time, it pretty well concludes this hearing and appreciate everybody's participation. All right, thank you. The next one is the 2024 Budget Hearing, so I open another hearing that you are willing to address and speak to our proposed budget. Chris, you have a short presentation?
Yeah, a short presentation, we can go through.
If we wanted, we need to release our.
If they're willing, welcome to stay or go. If they want to hear about our budget, they can stay.
Thank you. Having any, thank you for coming.
So we'll go through these slides. We don't have to go through them all in detail. A lot of this are things that we've already discussed in earlier board meetings throughout the summer and early fall. Just kind of put all together into one presentation just to give our, you guys and any constituents, an opportunity to speak about those. But this is our 2024 budget presentation. It's going to cover the education operations, debt service, and rainy day fund. We've hopefully now understood that education fund and operation fund cover certain, different types of expenses in our operations. And our revenue comes from different things as well, as far as those funds are concerned. We also are allowed to transfer dollars from one fund to another. However, we do have a cap that does not allow us to transfer more than 15% of our education fund revenues into our operation fund. So when we look at our budget estimate for 2024, it comes out to be 33 and a half million dollars. And it's broken down there by the four different funds that we are required to include as part of our submission to the Department of Local Government and Finance. Even though this doesn't cover all of our funds, this covers the majority of the ones that we require to submit. So that just gives you a breakdown. Obviously, most of our funds, our largest fund is our education fund as far as our expenses are concerned. 50% of our budget is related to educational costs. State-supported funds, which are, support our education fund, these are dollars that we receive from the state. The biggest component of that is our funding formula, which comes based off of the number of students that we have on ABM campaigns. You can also see there are other state-supported dollars, local-supported dollars that we receive that go into the education fund. I crossed out student fees because that is no longer one of those that we collect dollars for. So that will be a revenue loss when it comes to our education fund. So when we look at our sources of revenue, it's broken down there. You can see that our biggest source is state funding. 94% of our education fund budget comes from those dollars we receive per student. That's just a breakdown. As far as expenses are concerned, out of our education fund, you can see that 92% of our expenses are souring benefits out of those services that are paid from education fund dollars, primarily instructional services, classroom teachers, classroom instructors, aides, anything that relates to instructional costs. That's just a graph of those appropriations broken down. Obviously, the student ADM is a very important resource because that accumulates to 94% of all revenue of our education fund. So you always want to look at where you're trending when it comes to ADM. This is a historical look at where we have been trending. From a numerical standpoint, you look at it from a graphing standpoint, which is the next slide. It gives you a better representation that it has been on a decline, but over the last three to four years, we can see a leveling off of sorts for that ADM. This is a breakdown of those dollar-specific costs that go into each student for ADM. So you can see in our basic grant, we get a dollar-specific amount per student. Complexity is figured into that. What's not figured into that are the extra dollars that we get per student related to honors grants, vocational grants, and special education grant dollars. And you can see the breakdown of those. Anything that's highlighted, I guess in bold, are new dollars or new amounts in those categories. So like for honors grant, we never received dollars for dual credits. We never received dollars for early graduates or associate degrees. Those are something that are new, that are factored into these honors grants that the state would fund us if we had students that qualified for those. Then it leads us into our tax-supported funds, which is our debt service and operation funds, which we talked a little bit at our last board meeting. So you can go to the next slide. Looking at assessed valuation, you go to the next slide. We've already covered this at the last board meeting. We look at trends with all of that, which leads us to our debt service. That Geo Bond 2021 is our last bond that we have. That will be paid off at the end of this year. However, we are getting ready to close on our 2023 bond on October 3rd. So we will be receiving our dollars for that for projects that we've already been working on for this past year and some projects that will go into next year. Nothing related to this bond that we're looking at now for 2024. We won't be closing on that until next calendar year. So that has nothing to do with our 2024 budget. In our operational fund, revenues, our local property taxes are our biggest source of revenues. We also get other smaller revenues that go into that. The other biggest source is our transfers, the dollars that we transfer from our education fund into our operation fund. I think we talked about this at our last board meeting. You know, the property tax dollars that we do get, they don't fully fund our operational fund budget. And so the transfers from the education fund help cover a majority of that. That's the breakdown then. As far as expenses are concerned, we have a lot of different operational costs that come out of those, out of that fund. So general administration, that would be things like from central office, the business side of the central office, marketing, technology. Then we have custodial expenses and utility expenses that come out of that. We have our security services, which are SRO and our drug testing programs. Then we have our insurances and student transportation, and then our capital projects and equipment purchases that go along with that. That makes up that 9.9 million dollars in expenses. So that's a breakdown there. And then our last budget is rainy day fund. Obviously, we just kind of keep that for rainy day fund purposes. We do have some costs that we take out of there periodically throughout the year, but nothing major with that. So with that being said, that's kind of what our budget looks like for those four funds. I do not see that we would need to worry about anything related to tax anticipation warrants. We've done that in the past if we ran into cash flow issues or additional appropriations if needed to spend later out through the year. So with that, do you guys have any questions?
Wouldn't you guess that transfer from education to operations end up being 11, 12% aside?
Yes, that's where we've been trending the last couple of years. So yeah, try to stay around that. I don't see that increasing right now. I don't see that decreasing right now, but we'll probably stay around that number. Our budget adoption meeting then will be our next board meeting, October 10th, to finalize those, and then we'll be able to send out our budget to the DLGF. and then we'll be able to submit our budget to the DLGF.
So I really appreciate the way you put this together.
Yeah, I know we break it up throughout the year just to kind of try to be a little bit more specific on topic. And then I put it together there just to kind of show what we've discussed and if there were any changes to what we discussed from those previous times.
You're right, so we'll have an approval on October 10th.
Yeah, so I think right now it's just an opportunity for you guys or anybody in the community here to have any public comment on those, on this budget.
So before I close the public hearing, any questions? All right.
So with that, I would like to have a couple resolutions adopted as we get into that budget adoption. This first one is a resolution to adopt the appropriation modification. What this allows us to do is, once we submit our budget, we can get that budget back at any time. Statutorily, they have to submit it to us before December 31st, so it could come at any time. Once we receive that budget, you have ten days to get that submitted. That could fall in between a time where we don't even have a board meeting. And so this just allows me or the superintendent to work with the budget field rep in making any modifications in our appropriations to make our budget work. This does not allow us to add anything to our budget, but if we need to reduce or move appropriations to different things, we can do that in a timely fashion and get our budget approved during that time.
All right, good explanation, Chris. So we have a resolution in front of us for, for recognition, could resolution be approved?
So move second.
Call in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Second one would be the recommendation to approve transfer to rainy day.
Yeah, so in the budget presentation and when we talked about rainy day over the summer, we show a revenue that was included in that. This resolution will allow us then to make that go into effect. So we would be transferring dollars from the operation fund into the rainy day to show that we have supported that budget through that revenue. And so this is something we've done for a number of years now, just to kind of continue to build our rainy day fund to our goal. And so if you remember what our goal is, it was 10% of our education operation fund balance, or budget, excuse me, not balance, but budget. And so this would help us with that goal as well. Plus show up that we have made that revenue happen in that fund. So I would need to submit that to the DLGF as well as part of this budget.
So.
Call in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move right along to human resource. This evening, we have under-resignation Journey Willard, Alyssa Clark, Mary Merrill, Merrill here for facials. And you can ask the elementary staff. Underemployment Stephanie, Stephanie Stagel, Jennifer Pollard, Melody Yocum, Hamilton Sadler, and Scott Campbell. That is the positions there from custodian, career professional, and the last two being her body coaches at top of elementary. And then we have leave number 162. That will begin, that has already begun in August. And the last day for that would be in November.
Move to approve HR.
Certainly.
Call in favor of approval for HR, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Matt Hartman?
Yeah, I think you know, pretty little player there. What they did is they gave us a, take a look at that and you can see how many certifications, college credits, internships. It gives you all that data and how much they have gotten through their, one little point there. Saving more than 2.4 million dollars in tuition to Vincent University and IGOTech. They do a lot of good things there with their dual credits and internships, certifications and so on. We had a short meeting the other day, like to thank Mr. Keith Abrams for helping on the teacher contract over there. Teachers have approved, we have to go through the steps to get that approved for next week. They had a couple donations, one from a four-meter box and they're always generous, a fifteen thousand dollar donation. If your tool and I gave them the extra powder material, which is always good for the welding and things like that. Probably the biggest thing sitting over there that was donated was a SEMA truck from IMI. The whole truck, everything.
What are they going to do with it?
IMI cannot use it anymore because apparently there's a, if they get a stress crack on the frame or something, they got to junk it. So instead of just junking it, they brought it over there so the kids can work on it, play with hydraulics. Probably not making a comment. But it's there for them to work at, and that's huge. You know, it's kind of neat to look at, so, but that's basically all I have.
Thank you, superintendent report?
No, the only thing I just really wanted to say tonight is, as you can see in all the things we have at our board meetings, that we have a great programming at MSD in Walbush County, but also we have even better staff. And you can see that through our staff and student recognition, through the different things that the principals talk about. And so just really appreciate to be a part of MSD in Walbush.
Since Josh is sitting in the tent, should he have a brief one?
Well, I could really.
All right, utilizing the business, the first one would be school improvement plans from our elementaries.
And we're going to start tonight with Metro North Elementary, Mrs. Moore. And as I said, one more thing though too is, you do have the school improvement plans that were given to you earlier, but instead of scrolling through the hundreds of pages and being distracted, I decided not to put those on tonight. And so I did ask the principals and they said that they would be able just to talk through it twenty minutes each, so.
Twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds, yes.
Our school improvement plan for Metro North really does have very many changes from previous years. We're going to continue to focus on literacy and math and increasing our student attendance. The biggest thing seen are professional development focus. Last year, all of our K-line teachers across the district participated in some literacy training. It's letters, it stands for literacy educators, literacy essentials, language, essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. And this year, we are having our K-line teachers complete the second year of training for that. And our second grade teachers started their year one. And it's a huge endeavor. It's pretty intense and that definitely provides our teachers with another, another tool to help support students as they're learning to read. Our other professional developments are going to be focusing on looking at the new academic standards and reading, literacy, and math, and creating that bridge from our old standards to our new standards. It looks like instructional and, as well as reporting that to the next student.
Thank you. Mr. Moore is next.
Let's change one of my notes. Hey, thanks for the opportunity. We also have a school improvement plan at Sharp Creek, which is an obligation, a required obligation to have, but it's also very much an opportunity that within our staff, we can be discussing, organizing a document that has information that in mind. I'd like to say it paints a picture of Sharp Creek Elementary and some really important things. We strive for a clear document, a concise, to a point document, and an accurate document. So we have, I-Learn is referenced and the I-Read 3 is also referenced with some goals. But it's not just our goals, it's a review of historical results, where we shine, where we've not shined, it's all there. And then we gather that and it shows us a direction we need to be heading, areas of concern, areas in math or ELA, and what we can do better. And then also, we add in there, again, a picture of what we're doing. It clearly says, here's the pieces and parts, the resources, the programs, what we're doing that can allow us some improvement, whether that happened over the course of a three-year period or is going to happen in the next six months, whatever that case may be. So strategies, interventions, action steps, and resources are moving us forward. Couple of highlights, you know, there's positives from, for results of summative assessments and those big, big test items. There's positives and then there's some that are less positive. But a couple of the big positives, fifth grade Matthews, this past break, we were seventeen percent above the state passing rate, which was a nice showing. And we also in I-Read 3, obviously Metro North contributes to this because they have the students through their second grade, but an improvement of six and a half percent over previous year's passing rate. So want to pat people on the back when we do things well, when things turn out well. Now every year is a different group of students, we all recognize that. But we like to find positives and those are things that are in that document. Then we also consider formative assessments, the kind of as you go through a school year, monitoring, checking on student achievement growth, whether that be NWEA or just, you know, classroom teacher observations and information. We're always considering that to help guide us in decision-making. We do, we keep a running log basically of our professional development, what we've, what we've done in the past and what we're heading toward. It's potentially on there, but for instance, and it's everybody, Mrs. Rosemeyer, our building secretary. I refer to her as the office manager, which is a better title for what she does, but she's going to a training tomorrow because we just, we want everybody and every goal to have a chance to be getting better. We've got two teachers that in October are registered for some online math, specific professional development, and that's on there. So we're keeping a document that says, look what we're doing. And it shows us if there's ever a concern that we're not doing some improvement task or any of the things to help our own improve. And then we, we talk about what we do that keeps us safe in our building, students and staff. We talk about, you know, all the documents that guide our emergency responses and all those important things. But we also talk about how we protect our school's environment of being conducive to learning. And we talk about the PBIS, the Good Citizen Program, that's positive behavior intervention and supports that drives an awful lot of what kids hear us talk about in our building, trying to get them to make good choices and striving to get them to the point where they're good citizens overall. And then another place that I think is really important is we list and document how parents are partnering with us and are able to participate in what we're doing. A lot of academics, but there's other things in there that, you know, that we look at every year. It's good discussion, it's good, good conversation, and hopefully it's a very accurate document. So thank you for the opportunity to talk just a little bit about that. You get the chance, you want to read through it, have fun. It is posted, it'll be posted, they're on the website, I assume we're going to turn it in and stay here for long, so. Can I, Mr. Stoffer has been, shows all of them?
I'm not going to show you all, okay. A lot of the same things that Mrs. Moore said about the letters training, we're planning at Southwood Elementary as well. She's set up a lot of letters training for K to two staff for, for that science reading training that we're all moving forward to with the state. Another thing that we started doing this year was, is Haggerty, which is a new reading curriculum for grades K to two that Metro North has started as well. It's all geared towards science reading, books, all that, putting awareness and phonics, kind of getting back to what we did. Well, with the kids probably. So with that being said, our scores this year, if you look at the results of our building, I think we did fairly well. There's a lot of room for improvement, but I was calculating up throughout all the adding up math and reading and the six counties around us, our building was in the top three. So that kind of tells you what our teachers are doing in the classroom. I'm very proud of them. Like I said, there's a lot of room for improvement, especially in the I-Learn schools. So we're really focusing on student intervention in our building. And we're tracking that through new forms that we started in spring, in TSS forms, that Mrs. Law, Mrs. Stephanie, myself kind of put together to help teachers be able to pay attention to all their students. They can track me, we have to, we take their scores, we log them on paper, let's get to see what the percentages, national percentages are, all the NWEA scores, the benchmarking. And then we also have on those forms, different tiers, three different tiers of interventions that we can use for those kids that might need that. That way we're not missing some kids, because we found out last year, looking through data, that we did miss some kids and kids we didn't need some interventions that they should have been given. So our really, our focus is that making sure that we're hitting all of our kids and we're giving kids the education that they need. So we're going to start those data meetings in October after the first nine weeks, grade levels will meet and hopefully we can continue to move our kids in a positive direction with different interventions that we have. The incredible Mrs. Moore for setting up a lot of those reading, literacy interventions that I read as well. I know that's been a lot of work, so it's very appreciative, we still a lot of the things that Metro North is doing as well. So it's helped me out being a new principal, actually it's been my second. I'm still, still improving myself and just learning, so it's, it's continued growth for me, learning on what we need to do to get better. And there's still a lot of work out there, I feel that we can do some better things. And one of them is definitely interventions are, are how do we get better and what do these things entail? Like Mr. Moore said, safety plan is another one. Obviously with safety navigation, schools will continue to develop that plan. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago as a district to work on our, our district safety plan and we're continuing to do that in our own building, so that information will be there as well as we continue to update that and get things more secure. We just had Officer Rainey Brawls come in and we're working on just making our building a little safer. We're doing instructional videos. We came up with that idea and they're going to end up doing that with each building. So kids will know, especially teaching elementary kindergarten kids how to be safe in the school if there's a lockdown. What are they doing in the hallway, what are they doing in the bathroom? So we're going to have videos to kind of show those kids, those types of things. So those are things that we're still working on. Safety-wise, other than that? Oh, one other thing that we started this year that I think is going to really help. As we started doing a new dyslexia screener through NWEA called the MAP reading fluency. It's pretty neat to see, we can benchmark or assess kids in twenty minutes, the whole entire class, twenty to thirty minutes. And it gives us a breakdown of where's kids' strengths and weaknesses are, and we can pinpoint those areas that we're focusing on. Again, those interventions. And it's pretty cool to see because the kids wear a noise cancelling headset with a boom mic and they're reading, they're talking at all at one time. They can hear each other and then we can go back and we can replay it and hear how they're saying, what they're reading. But it also calculates all the scores and everything for us. So it really saves teachers a lot of time as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stoffer. So just like our, we have excellent secondary, high school principals, we have obviously a excellent elementary team here too. I really appreciate all the work and what they do and how they work together and learn from each other and appreciate that because we have different experiences with everyone. And so it's, it's great to be able to take all those experiences, bring them together to have a great group that we have. So appreciate them and would ask that you approve the school improvement plans.
I appreciate the individual intervention, you know, because every little, everyone counts. Do we have a motion to approve the plans?
So move second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item would be recommendation to approve the alternative education grant.
Yes, so the education, our alternative education new program proposal, we will give to the state if you approve that tonight. That was given to you earlier. So since we have our own, what we call our day reporting, but also alternative education, also called continuum of services. We actually put, actually Dr. Zachary West, who is our teacher in that program. He has a lot of different experiences in special education and even in college level, university level too. And he's taking on a lot of different things, it's kind of a evolving kind of a program. But since all the schools in Walbush County now have their own program with this, we have wanted to do something with alternative education program and ask that you approve. we have wanted to do something with alternative education program and ask that you approve this. That is one of those, I have said before, education maybe requirements Indiana code, this is an Indiana code, but it is an obligation that you approve this before I can submit the proposal to possibly get also grant funding for this program.
All right, a motion to approve that, so we can apply.
So.
Say it. Call in favor, say aye. All right, thank you. The list for fundraisers is there, it's quite extensive. You could buy about anything you want. So we need to approve this also.
I'd love to approve that.
Sorry.
No, okay. Yes.
I do. All right, everyone in favor of approving that fundraiser for this year, say aye. All right, thank you. Also we have recommendation approved salvage of 49 projectors.
And as you know, we've had those TVs that have been replaced, they've been replaced, not replaced, yes, the projectors, the TVs have replaced projectors. And so anyway, we ask that we approve then the salvage, which means that Mr. Hayden would be able to sell these then.
Online, what's the possibility?
Well, actually he's going to open it up, I believe, to any staff member first and then give you a company offer.
All right, recommendation, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So move.
Second.
Call in favor, say aye. All right, fifth item is a teacher contract tentative agreement.
So we would like to basically, Dr. Coon's going to explain a little bit of the details about what is different from this contract from the other contract, and then we'll explain a little bit more, and I'd like to thank some people and also share some other information, so.
Yeah, so the contract, I believe, has been ratified by the teachers association. They met with Mr. Keith Abraham, myself, and Mr. Bowman a couple of times to come up with a new two-year contract. And so this will be a two-year contract for 23, 25. There will be a re opener in the contract for the 24, 25 school year. But for this school year, what we have agreed upon is that we would move the starting salary from 40,000 to 45,000. And the top of the salary would move from 66,300 to 71,300. So our salary range will now be 45,000 to 71,300, which is about a $5,000 increase in salaries, salary amounts on that scale. So the lowest a person would be making going into this year is 45,000. Everybody else in the schedule will get a $2,000 increase. Along with that, there is a $700 increase to health insurance benefits, and that's to help cover some of the increase in health insurance premiums over the last couple of years. We also increased our retirement match contribution from a 2.25% increase, or excuse me, match to a 3% match. We also had some ECA adjustments as far as increases in our coaches' pay and some of our academic stipends. And then there were some language changes in relation to mileage and bereavement. All said and done, this will be an addition of $655,000 of new money that's going into teachers' hands.
And so I do want to thank Mr. Bowman as far as being the representative of the board, Dr. Coon for all the work that he's done, and also the MSD of Waukesha County Education Association member, a negotiating team, which was Matt Denny, also Shelley Myers, and also Ryan Sinckoff. So I just want to thank them. We've done very well the last several years being able to work together. Like Dr. Coon said, we had two meetings. Some people dragged this on for a long, long time. So just really appreciate all the work that has been done to be able to end up with the starting salary from 40,000 last year to 45,000 this year, then top of the scale with a master's degree of 71,300. So, and also the other things with the, like Dr. Coon already said, but just to reiterate that again, with the retirement benefit from the 2.25 to 3%. Again, also the insurance increase and all the ECA increases also. So appreciate the teachers ratifying. This is just another step in the whole process. This is again just a meeting to discuss it, and then we will ask that you ratify it officially on October 10th.
It was a pleasure sitting in on the discussions because there's such a spirit of cooperation. We're really fortunate to have the teachers that we have, their belief in in this state. Yeah, that's great. All right, so recommendation to approve the overnight field trip for Southwood Elementary 4th grade camp, compensate, that'll be the 2nd, 3rd of November. Please approve that.
So.
Say it.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also under board policy, this evening, a second reading, and we will vote on board policy 4230, which is the restraint, change in the restraint.
And really the only thing that we changed, at one time there was a blank as far as when we were to notify parents and guardians of physical restraint or an isolated time out with a student, and we added that, not added it, we just put it in there because there was nothing there to 24 hours. So we will communicate this to parents within 24 hours. So I ask that you approve this policy.
So move.
Second.
Call in favor of approval, say aye. There's no opposition, that passes. All right, thank you. Public comments this evening before we close on any.
Is that a little trip on that?
Yeah.
How did you do that?
I'm trying.
You were, man. I was.
Any items for the board?
You already have a comment, I do. Now I'm.